At this time, I'm going to welcome everybody and officially open the Southampton Planning Board Meeting for Wednesday, March 17. We're running remote, as you can see. It's also televised on Charter Channel 191. All members are present tonight, and we also have an interested guest that Cindy has invited. Cindy, would you like to make that introduction for us?
Sure. Recognizing that there appears to be an opening after the end of his term for Planning Board, and Keith, I can't believe, is leaving. I tried to twist his arm.
Ten years right like that.
But, and you know Sarah, so Sarah Stein is present with us today. She is actually one of my neighbors, and chatted with her, and it turns out she's really interested in getting involved, so I invited her to come tonight to get a little flavor for how our meetings go.
Yep, well, you guys will be getting an upgrade. Sarah's a civil engineer as well. I've worked professionally with Sarah, so she'll bring a lot of value to the board, for sure. So you guys may miss me, but after the first meeting, you won't remember my name.
Well, I'll remember that, Keith, holy cow.
Well, thank you for your interest, Sarah, and they'll be looking for your name on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask Mark Reed from Heritage Survey, who has the first agenda tonight, just after I read the legal announcement. But there's a residential stormwater application that was submitted for David and Susan Huntley at 151 East Street. And the public hearing notice was published March 2nd and 9th in the Daily Hampshire Gazette. And also, I personally mailed the Butters notifications that Mark provided me with the list from the applicants. And the Planning Board Public Hearing Notice was published as such. Southampton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing March 17, 2021, at 7:00 PM virtually via Zoom, with the meeting number and password that we were able to get into this meeting on, for a special permit application in accordance with the Stormwater and Erosion Control Bylaw, Section 14, submitted by David and Susan Huntley, located at 151 East Street. Copy of the application and plans are available by contacting the SouthamptonPlanningBoard@gmail.com. Paul Deeman, Chair, Southampton Planning Board. So, given that, and the notice given to the Butters, I had one notification that I had to send the plans to one of the Butters, who was interested. And I had no response back from Randall Kemp. The Highway Superintendent had evidently no comments to make. So, at this time, I'll ask Mark Reed to share with us the application and the plan going forward.
Sure. Sure, good evening. I guess for the record, there has been a name change through our company. The new name is Heritage Land Surveying and Engineering, Inc. So, just for record, that's our new name of our company.
Take me about six months to remember that, Mark.
I know, me too. I still call it Heritage Surveys, after about 38 years being there. So, I can share the plan with you. Also wanted to acknowledge that David and Susan Huntley, the applicants, are here tonight. And... I've got a couple of series of plans. Whoops, that's the wrong one. I want the site plan. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Good. So Susan and David would like to, or in the process of building a new home, which is located at 151 East Street, pretty much across from Beshtes' apple orchard and their store. And I'll zoom in on the locus map down here, because it is a 19.6 acre parcel of land that they own. So we did a locus map, because it is a very large parcel that they do own. So, excuse me. East Street being on the south side of the property, north being to the right. Beshtes' farm stand and barns and so forth are right across the street. So there's an existing driveway, trap rock gravel driveway, that enters into the project through an existing farm field. All this property was part of the Pease Farm back, and it was David Huntley's grandmother's farm. And mother grew up here on this property. So, it's 805 feet through the field. If you drive by there, you'll see the driveway going through. We got Conservation Commission approval last year, I'm sorry, in 2019, two years ago now, time flies, to construct this portion of the driveway, following the grade of the property. And the amount of disturbance at that time was only about less than 20,000 square feet, so it didn't qualify for an application under the stormwater permit bylaw. But where they would like to build, and they plan to build, which the plan represents, does trip them into stormwater permit violence, so that's what we're doing tonight. This area that's shown on the plan is a mostly wooded parcel, portion of the property. This is on pretty much the top of a hill, as you can see by the amount of contour lines being shown on the plan. The driveway would come from the end of the existing trap rock driveway at the edge of the field, come up the hill, wrap around to a proposed house location. There is an onsite storage disposal system and a well, because there is no town water up in this section of East Street that's available for the project. The plan also shows erosion control barriers being installed along the entire lower section of the slope to protect against erosion during construction. There's a natural swale through this property that comes down in daylight to the farm field out to the south for the project. The plan also shows all the proposed grading associated with the construction of the septic system. I'll zoom in, so you can see that. There'll be leaching trenches being located near the driveway, going up to the house location at the top of the hill. So, in doing so, because of the amount of area, it has about 68,790, 68,790 square feet of disturbance for the project, so. So we're before the board tonight requesting a waiver, as we have done many times before with these for residential dwelling. Is the house itself in sight is in full compliance with Title V. As I mentioned, there are no wetlands within 100 feet, or probably 300 feet or more of the house location. But we already have Conservation Approval for the first section of the driveway that was installed two years ago. The second sheet that I have is just a construction detail sheet that complies with Title V requirements. Where did it go? Here it is. The percolation test has the proposed silt fence and construction-related details and notes relative to stabilization of the property and construction-related notes.
I guess that was the part I was most interested in, is that, because of the amount of the slope, and then in the amount that's being cleared, what's the plan for stabilization of that slope?
Sure. The plan for the would be to loam and seed it, mulch the hillside, so that...
Yes, that area specifically.
Yeah, all that area there would be loamed and seeded, seeded and mulched immediately, and to prevent the erosion from coming down. But really, at the top of the hill, there's not a lot of runoff from up gradient areas. It's just mainly from this area down the slope. But that's what the plan would be, is to loam and seed it and mulch it, that whole area, and get it stabilized as soon as we can.
Sorry, do you know what time of year you're planning on doing that, so we know that?
Look, yes. Sure. So they would like to start construction as soon as possible in the spring. The first thing they have to do is drill a well. In order to drill a well, they've got to build the roadway driveway into the property to get the well truck up there. So they're hoping to be able to do that in April, and then start the construction of the house probably in the end of April or May, build it through the summer, get the whole site stabilized before the fall, you know? Probably get it all seeded and everything late summer, early fall. Get it, give it time to establish.
And you mentioned the driveway was already trap rock, right? So it kind of acts like a track pad, the whole thing.
Yeah, the whole thing for 805 feet. I mean, it's all stone, it's all stoned dust now. And, you know, like I mentioned, and you were on the commission then, Dan, when this was approved for the first section of the driveway that was within the buffer zone and the crossing. For, and it's all in and stable. It's pretty easy to see if you drive by. That's a big, big field. They intend to maintain the fields. They have horses and donkeys between the family, and that's still going to be utilized in the future.
Any other questions from the board regarding the plan, Keith?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, Mark. I think in your email, and I guess I'll ask you to maybe talk a little bit more about the waivers, but you'd indicated a few things in your email. You didn't indicate there was a slight increase in runoff, but you're also looking for a waiver from a full-blown drainage analysis, and then a waiver from stormwater management best practices. Did you mean a operation and maintenance agreement? You looking for a waiver of the operation and maintenance agreement?
Yes, yes. I mean, we're proposing that silt fence and best management practices be used to construct the driveway, but we're asking for a full, you know, waiver on the full-blown analysis.
And that includes a peer review, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Yeah, just for the edification of some of the newer board members, you know, typically if this was a larger site or a commercial site, you know, that we would require an operation and maintenance and inspection agreement, or if this was a large subdivision. And the point of that is to allow the town the ability to conduct regular inspections of said drainage system. And in the event of, you know, lack of, lack of management from the property owner or the homeowners association, the town would then, you know, make those inspections and perform those repairs. So with a private, you know, a single lot, private residence like this, I think it's, you know, obviously appropriate to not require an operation and maintenance agreement. Mark, can you speak a little bit to about, you know, the statement in your email about a slight increase in runoff?
Sure. So, you know, with any project that currently is wooded and going to be a dwelling located on it, the driveway, being, it's still going to be trap rock gravel, TRG surface, it's not going to be paved, because many reasons. One is the cost of trying to pave the driveway that's, you know, that length. There will be a slight increase, but the property itself, being very large, and the fields and meadows that they have will allow the stormwater to recharge into the existing ground.
Okay.
As I mentioned in the site plan, the, that whole front 800 feet or more is all a large meadow. And this topography on this piece flows to their property. Doesn't flow to the abutting property. It's all contained on the property of the Huntleys. So we're not discharging any stormwater on anyone else's property, except for their own property in itself.
Okay, great. That's an important clarification, and again, that's one of the performance standards of the stormwater bylaws, to make sure that post-development discharge rates don't exceed pre-development rates. So thank you for that clarification, Mark.
Sure.
I have no further questions, Chairman. I'll open it up to the rest of the board.
Yeah, I think, you know, for the most part, these waivers are acceptable. The only thing that I'm concerned about is not depicting any plan location of where your erosion and sediment control features are going. You just have a general, you know, note or detail, but it doesn't really address the need for protection during construction. And I know you're replacing the soil with loam. I mean, you know, I see some hilly locations here, but...
So, and there's so many lines on this plan, Paul, but we do define the limit of construction and silt fence. So unfortunately, there's so many lines, but the silt fence is shown on the plan, starting at the field, running all along this section, which is basically the edge of the existing woods, all the way up along this section. It's unfortunately, we should have probably done it on two-foot contours instead of one foot, and then you have half the contours. But it's this line right here is the erosion control barrier and silt fence limited construction all the way up to the top of the hill. And it's shown on the plan. So basically, basically running along the edge of the woods.
I have no idea how anyone could find that, but thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, if you look at a printout of the plan, it comes out better, because we put a line type or a width to that line in a PDF, it doesn't come out as clear as, and we tried to label it in a couple of different spots.
So, I think this plan should probably, I mean, I, you know, I think it should be identified for clarity, but, you know, is this, can you zoom out a little bit?
Zoom out, okay. I mean, I guess we could, we could add the silt fence line to the locus map.
I mean, I think if you just, I think if you just change the line type, put a thickness on it, make it like a foot or two wide in its thickness, in the poly line, you should be able to see it. Because it just gets buried by all the contour lines you got.
Sure. I know Paul has copies of the hard copies of the printouts, but we can, we can, we can add a thickness to that line, Paul, without a problem. And potentially put it on the locus, because that's a little less cluttered with contour lines if we were to add the silt fence.
On the actual plans itself, it's a little bit more definitive, but I concur with Paul, if you get even embolden it more.
Sure. Okay, we can do that.
And also, to talk about your, what you're doing with the paths, you're putting in a track pad, you said?
No, the existing driveway that's out there now, for 800 feet, is already TRG surface, all the way out to East Street. So by the time any vehicle travels 800 feet from the construction site to East Street, the tires will be all cleaned off, because you're back 800 feet.
Okay.
Off the road.
I guess I'm kind of looking to the other board members' thoughts on seeding for this slope. Do you think that'll be sufficient to control erosion? Or like, we want erosion control blankets, or to use hydromulching or something?
I think it's their call. I mean, frankly, it's their responsibility to maintain the slope. If they can't do it, then they got bigger problems.
Yeah, it's pretty two to one, right?
Yeah, some areas is steep. And like Paul said, if it needs to be hydroseeded or use a blanket, they will have to do that.
Okay, so would that be part of the, this plan, calling out what is used for seeding, or?
It's up to the board to condition, if they want to condition any further seeding specifications on it.
Yeah, I guess that's my concern, and I looked at the four veteran members for their thoughts, is due to the steepness. We want, are we looking for some type of blanketing or other protections against erosion?
I think it's up to them, frankly. I mean, it's, they're going to have a headache if they have to fix the erosion, if there is erosion due to the slope. It's their call. I mean, I don't think we need to make it a condition, in my opinion, but I think it's up to them, because they're the ones that are going to be fixing it all the time, if that's the case. But frankly, that's, that's their site. They have erosion protection along the side of the property where the disturbing limits are. I'm okay with, you know...
Because the erosion would stay within the boundaries of their property? You're saying that it's up to them?
Yeah, I mean, and if they have to slow down water with putting in, you know, if they have to slow down water on their site, we're putting in, you know, silt fencing or something to kind of, to, you know, slow down the water, then that's kind of a means and methods on their end. But frankly, it's, you know, my opinion is it's, it's their vegetation headache that they have to deal with.
I think one of the potential concerns that we've seen on recent projects that does not apply to this project is I don't think there's very high potential for sedimentation to enter the public roadway, like we've seen on other projects in the recent past. So there's quite a run for anything would really enter the public roadway on this one. But I do agree with Paul, this is more of a, I guess, a means and methods. Mark's kind of pulled up a vegetative cover note here for us that talks about fertilization rates, seeding rates, mulching rates, which that seems pretty sufficient, in my opinion.
Frankly, it's isolated. The next word you got to use is isolated.
And now, those notes are on the detail sheet, which is sheet two of the set of plans that we have.
Cindy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd like to ask a question. So I'm looking at the assessor's map of this property, and it looks like Map 30, Parcel 45, which is listed as a 33, almost 34 acre parcel. And yet you're calling it a 19-something acre parcel. Are they subdividing this?
They already have. Let me pull up the A&R Plan that was prepared, and the Planning Board signed it back in February of 2020.
Okay.
I've got it right here, Cindy. So, you're right, the original assessor's parcel showed these two pieces together. The David Huntley and Virginia Huntley's home is here. This land was split, because they added 15.8 acres of land to their existing house out of this plan, and conveyed Parcel A-1 and B-2 to Suzanne and David Jr. to build their house.
Okay. So apologies for me not remembering that. Was I probably one of them that signed it, maybe? But...
But, that was during COVID, at the beginning of COVID, so...
Okay. But the other thing is, you know, it's interesting, because I'm looking at the actual property card, you know, today's property card, and that, that's not reflected on there. Obviously, it's not their problem, but I think our assessor's office should be updating that, because it's, it looks like still one, one piece of property, if it was...
Yeah, they do update. I forget exactly when timeframe they do that, Cindy. They do it once a year or something.
Okay. It looks like the property was sold, according to this property card, on the 22nd of January of this year. So maybe there was some kind of transaction that took place. Okay, it's really not related to the stormwater, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So some, I believe what they do is, after the new fiscal year, in February, in July, they update the plans and maps based on the land surveyances of that year, of the previous fiscal year.
Okay, great.
So it'll catch up, that'll catch up in the next round.
Really looks like a lovely location. I was at Beshtes not too long ago, and looked over there and saw all that work that was being done. Nice up there in the woods.
Yes, thank you. It is, and, you know, the intent is to keep the farm, family farm together. David, when did your grandmother start the farm, in early?
Because my grandfather bought, or my grandfather's family bought it during the Civil War, it was the 1860s.
Wow. And the last name was Pease, is that what I heard?
Yes, yep.
Amazing.
It was the Pease Farm, yep.
Okay.
It's a small world, because David's grandmother was a schoolteacher, and I had her as an elementary schoolteacher in East Hampton when I was growing up, so...
All right, any other further questions from the board? Any questions from anybody from the audience who may have a question? Any other questions from the board, no?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion isn't made, and second to close the public hearing. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Keith? Paul?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. 500. Considering there's, that's been closed, if there's no other questions or needed information for this project, I'll entertain a motion to accept the application. to uh accept the application.
A motion to accept the the application and the requested waivers, which include a waiver of the maintenance inspection agreement and um.
Peer review.
Peer review, hydraulic hydrology analysis, drainage analysis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Keith and seconded by Dan.
No, I think that was Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion made by Keith and seconded by Paul. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Keith?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
The motion has been passed and the permit has been granted. Uh Mark, I will write up the decision in the next couple of days and get it to you.
Good.
And I don't know if I sent, I think I sent this along originally with the uh copy of the legal notice, but the uh legal cost of two eighty-five forty-eight for the ad.
There's the check.
Could you?
We have the check. How do you want us to get it to you?
Can you email that check to me?
Stick it through the camera.
Yeah, yeah. Where's the insert? Yeah. Um, okay, thank you very much, but if you just put it in Town Hall, it'll get to my box and I'll be there at the first of the week and uh give it to Ms. Day in the treasurer's office.
Okay, we'll get it up there tomorrow. Thank you, board, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I will I will um revise the plan to make the silt fence line bolder.
Yep.
And send a new PDF to you for the record.
Yep.
Um to to take care of that, okay?
And if you could, uh Mark, just print me out, just all I'll need is one copy of that so I can have it from my uh file, the original plan.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you and good luck, Mr. and Mrs. Huntley.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
And uh happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yes.
Bonjour.
We think we had to uh abstain today, but not tomorrow. All right, uh moving right along here. I have three building permits, two of which I previously approved since this is the first time we've gotten together in three meetings. And the only business was a couple of uh building permits hanging around. One of them um was from Salumi Construction on three ninety-one College Highway. It was the former um Christ Community Church parcel that we approved years ago, but this is a group home now that purchased the property or parcel anyway. And uh the area of disturbance was twenty-three thousand square feet, so I signed off on that one. And also Daniel Hardy building a house on six Sarah Lane. And the area of disturbance there was uh approximately twenty-five thousand square feet. Um well under our stormwater management uh threshold, so I signed off on that one. But the third one I needed to have you folks look at. Cindy, did you do you have that email that um I sent to Keith on the board with the plan that he measured? Any chance you could call that up from the email?
Was it recently?
A week ago?
I don't know if I do.
This is like thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. He's like very, you you'll see the number on it. That might help you remember.
Anyway, anyway, the plan came in. It was it was very, very tight, so I sent the plan to Keith to have him measure it and he sent me back. Unless you have it, Keith, I don't know if you have the uh.
Yeah, I remember even the even the applicant's plan noted the area of disturbance as thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. I think I measured, you know, just slightly under that. So it's 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 all of a touch under forty thousand square feet. So, you know, with a plan like that, you know, it's very easy for that line of silt fence to grow an extra foot and then suddenly we're into forty thousand square feet. So I think we just, you know, we need to add. They're they're under the threshold. At the end of the day, they're under the threshold.
I have it. I have the email if you guys want it.
Is that the one from from Keith?
Yeah.
Can you maybe call that up?
I got it.
And and share that map?
Uh, I'm gonna have to save it as a document and then do that because it's in an email right now, so hold on. I'll try.
You could continue, Keith. Uh you had a question about putting a condition on it, though.
Um, yeah, I'm trying to see what trying to find my original email. I wonder if it came out of my work email.
It did. It came out of uh on point.
All right. Let's see if I can find it.
I already know what my question's gonna be, so I can ask it. So I looked at it on Google Earth and it looks like it's 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 got tree cover right now, so I guess my question is how by by removing trees and the plants, are they going to ensure they're still under that number? It seems like they're gonna be uh at the mercy of the locations of those of of the vegetation wh- when when they um do that, like if the if there was an open area, then yeah, they could draw that perfect shape, but I think you know, you you almost have to like look at the site and look at the trees to determine if that can actually uh occur.
I can't save this. It's it's in an email, so I can't. It's not a document.
There there's Keith. Oh, that's um.
Let's see here.
No, that's the that's the Huntley one.
Yeah, I I know. I don't know why I pulled that up. There we go.
There you go.
Okay, so I drive by this site every day. It is, it has been cleared. It hasn't, actually, it has been cleared and stumped. It actually looks pretty well organized, too. All the logs are stacked up. It doesn't look uh doesn't look like a wasteland of a construction site. It's pretty well organized. Um what this markup doesn't show, I'll try to do it, is my cursor showing up here?
Yep.
Okay, so on the, I guess, if if Crooked Ledge Road runs north to south, on the eastern side of the property for, it's quite a ways out, but there is a there is a wetland back here. And the grading of this property is such that water would flow from west to east. Um so while these soils are exposed, there is, you know, the moderate potential that we might have some sedimentation leaving the clearing area and traveling over, you know, what would be forested, a forested area. Um from my experience with preparing SWPs, you know, the the EPA looks for what they call at least a fifty-foot natural buffer between wetlands. So this site would certainly comply with that fifty-foot natural buffer. Um but considering the the high potential that that thirty-nine thousand nine hundred square feet could easily turn into something greater than forty thousand, my suggestion was, as a condition, is that we require silt fence on that back property boundary. Just in the event those limits do grow, um silt fence, with with the site completely stripped and essentially grubbed at this point, silt fence would be pretty easy to put in. And I could not tell from my twenty-five mile an hour drive by every day if they had in fact put silt fence on the back forty. But I think that would be my recommendation. I think it's just a good BMP, best management practice in a scenario like this. But it is under forty thousand, so it is, you know, it is outside of our purview, but we do have the opportunity to at least recommend a condition on this.
All right, uh Keith, what's the proper wording for that again, so I can write it on the permit?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say um, you know, that we require installation of sedimentation fencing on the eastern project limit. And you could all, we could, we could, we could also add from the uh northern to the southern property line. So basically, we're gonna run a roll of silt fence on that eastern project limit from the north property line to the south property line, since the clearing limits pretty much are pretty close to those property lines. I think it would be um it'd be a good idea to run a line of silt fence from bound to bound.
All right. Any other questions on this building permit? Paul?
All right, here and done. I'll make a motion to endorse the permit with said notation.
Motion been made. Do I hear a second?
Take it.
Motion's made by Keith, seconded by Paul. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Keith?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. And just for the record, could I get a motion on the previous two permits I signed off on just for the record again? Um for Dan Hardy at uh six Sarah Lane?
Yeah, uh uh yeah, go ahead, Keith.
I'll motion to approve permit for uh Hardy at six Sarah.
Second. Since I started saying, I thought I should say.
I'll let you get this next one, Dan.
All in favor?
I don't know. I mean, these could be your last ones. I I feel like.
Wait a minute, we got the month of April to go.
All right.
He can't go anywhere until that.
Actually, the town elections aren't even, the dates are not necessarily early May, Keith. Sorry.
No, you might have three more meetings out of me.
Remember, remember Jim last year's is terminated in May. I think he finally got off in what, September?
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, on that Sarah Lane, all in favor? Keith?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. And then finally, the one that uh Salumi Construction for three ninety-one College Highway. Motion?
I'll make the motion for three ninety-one College Highway.
Dan, second?
I second it.
Oh. Cindy? All in favor? Keith?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Dan?
Ayes.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right, good. Thank you. Building permits out of the way. I emailed everyone a request by Lucy Dalton just to review bylaw, general bylaw changes that were coming up for the next town meeting. About committee appointments, committee responsibilities, resignations, um elections, swearing in, et cetera. Did uh everybody have a chance to review those? I looked them over and there was really nothing I think I can add to any of it, uh unless someone found something that they would like uh to be noted.
I am sorry, I didn't get to read those myself, sorry. But I do think they have to go to um town council anyway, uh you know, before they show up on the warrant.
They're going, they they sent it out to all boards just to review, but again, it's pretty boilerplate this stuff when it comes to uh responsibilities and elections. Obeying the open meeting law sworn by town clerk.
Yep.
Um duties of the chairperson about agendas and minutes. Pretty standard stuff.
Yeah, I didn't see anything earth shattering there that would change our, or at least this board's course of operation. It talks about forums, motions. Um which is good, because I think some of the, some of this, you know, took me a while to learn, so I think it's nice to have it documented. What a major, what a majority vote requires, things like that.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I didn't see any, this is certainly an improvement over what is existing, which is basically nothing, so um I didn't have any modifications.
I think the only two things that stuck out to me were to, as a reminder, that you could be without, like, we're a five-member board, but we could be without uh one member for a period of time and still be able to function because we would have uh over fifty percent from the members um voting. And the other one was uh, which we've never had a problem with, is absenteeism. If if a member is absent for um more than half the meetings in a six-month period, you, the board could vote to remove them. Just just stuff like that, but um we never had any trouble with that.
So you're saying it's a chance for me to get off the board, truly?
No, no, no.
If you if your screen is on and you're not there, I suppose.
I actually have a.
Cardboard cutout out, you know?
Get you come from high school, but uh I had a question about it, you know, just in terms of for this board, um would it would it help us to have a uh say a seven-member board for attendance? And does this allow us to, does that something different?
No, you still, you still would need a a majority. You'd need, you'd need more if we were a seven-member board, I think.
Make it harder.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, can I, can I raise some other um bylaw issues or when you finish talking about that one?
Go ahead.
So um there is no planning board bylaw in the general bylaws, anything that defines who we are and and any sort of guidelines as to who we are. There is for some of the other boards and committees, and I just got um a sample of one, which was the Agricultural Commission. It just came in to me this afternoon. Um, we don't have to talk about it on this at this moment in time, but may I um share that with everybody by email and perhaps put it on a future agenda you didn't have a chance to review it? So that's that's one thing, because I I know that committee is working really hard to, you know, shore up our bylaws and do a good job with it. And the second thing is, which I think Paul knows, um the question came up Jeepers Crow, was it a year or so ago, Paul Demon, about um having an alternate member of the planning board, which I inquired about. Um turns out, we're gonna need a bylaw for that, and that would have to be a bylaw that would be approved, of course, at town meeting. Um so I wonder, this is just a discussion point. Um there's only one other board that I know of that, uh and somebody on the bylaw committee, Chris Fowles, told me she only knows of one other board that has alternate members, and that's the Council on Aging Board. Uh but um what was your thinking originally, Paul, when you brought this up a while back about getting an alternate member? Basically, just to fill out if we needed a quorum? Is that what your thought was?
Well, that, but also um trying to groom someone to come along. Um, you know, you sit in and listen and watch. Um alternate uh members do have votes in certain uh instances. Um somebody was sick, say, for instance, we had a uh public hearing on a subdivision or something that required a two-thirds vote. And we had members that were there at the meeting originally, but then weren't able to make the subsequent meetings uh that were continued and we had to have a vote on it, then you could ask that person, the the alternate, to step in. Uh lately, with that Mullen, excuse me, the Mullen rule where you can now with Zoom and and go in and and, and go in and, uh, review meetings and everything, you can almost avoid that, but it's, it's really kind of like having somebody in the background, because every five years, Sarah, um, someone in this board turns over, there's, uh, five-year term, and then each year you lose someone, provided they don't, um, re-up. And this is, this is a good way of having interested parties be a part of the board, and then when the time comes that there is an opening, they certainly can step in and, um, they're up to speed on, on things, rather than coming in cold like Cindy did and, uh, Dan. Uh, Keith and Paul were engineers by trade, as you are, Sarah, and you're, it's kind of what you do for a living a lot of times, so there wasn't a lot of catching up to do. Um, so that was pretty much it, Cindy.
Okay, I, I actually just got two texts from people who tell me that there, there is an alternate for ZBA, and that's a question mark, that person isn't entirely certain. And then, um, Marla just texted me that she's an alternate on the Ag Commission, as, as is Randall, so I was incorrect in saying there's only one other board that they know of, so clearly, there is precedent in our town for having an alternate, and I see value in it. So I guess it's a case of how we go about doing this at this point, um, uh, whether we just, um, try to find a boiler pay, plate, um, bylaw with an alternate, as well as utilize the one, um, to create a, a regular planning board bylaw, and clearly, it should include the alternate. So I, I'll be happy to work on that and, and present it for a future meeting, if you'd like.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, does that have to go to public hearing, is that just a recommendation from our committee to, uh, select board?
I, I don't know about public hearing, we can ask that question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming we wouldn't need a public hearing to request to have an alternate.
Okay, but eventually, it has to go not only, um, to, um, legal counsel for review, but also eventually go before town meeting for approval. So I don't know about public hearing. Uh, Janet Kane just texted me and she said, there is an alternate listed for ZBA, she looked it up, so, okay.
You want to get any more specifics on it, Cindy, we'll certainly look into it and proceed.
Okay, happy to do that.
Um, couple of announcements to make here, that the, uh, and you may have followed it by email, PVC granted, uh, DLTA projects, um, grant on the, uh, housing, which was, uh, submitted by our board and will be used for affordable housing. Jim Seany is very happy, and, uh, that project will get underway pretty quick. Um, I think there's two people from PVPC going to be working on it with the town, so we'll be having some meetings with Housing Authority on that. The owners of the parcel next to Opa-Opas, as you recall, they came to us in February of 19, I believe it was, for a, um, Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, they wanted to put on that parcel, but it needed a zone change to commercial, um, highway from Commercial Village. Well, they're coming and resubmitting again, and there was a technicality, um, on the original one, and that's why they're resubmitting. They could go to town meeting, um, going by our last, uh, meeting we had with them on the public hearing, but I didn't understand it fully from Ed Gibson, but if, if an individual applies for a zone change versus a group or an entity or a corporation, it's handled differently. And again, I, I apologize for not understanding, uh, the language, but in any event, they're resubmitting, so he's asked me to, uh, set a public hearing date, because it's going to be forwarded to us from the select board, uh, because they're going to allow it. So this will be reheard again about changing the zoning on that property. So looking at the calendar, the soonest I can get that on the public hearing publications and stuff is like the 21st of April. So just to let you know that, um, that's going to be in the offing, and they'll present again their reasons that they want to change the zoning, and once again, all we do will make a recommendation from, from our point of view, whether we recommend that it be, um, changed, or we recommend that it not be changed, and ultimately, town meeting votes on that. So this is just a, uh, bump along the road that they have to take care of. Our vote and our recommendations really, uh, are immaterial to what the voting public may think, so.
So, um, Paul, could you consider inviting someone, maybe Ed, to the public hearing, just so that we understand that technicality? Why, why is it that, what happened?
Right, I certainly will. Um, now we've had a request from Marla Hank and Conscom, Marla, you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um, I got the email from you, and it's about Marla's request, and Conscom wants to have parcels that are owned by the town, conservation areas aren't listed with an address number, and that's, uh, something that Marla has requested that we, um, take up tonight. So I had her contact Martha Lemey and give us the numbers of the abutters of these conservation areas. And the first one is the Zipta Farm on Glendale Road. And the, Dan, you're probably familiar with that, uh, the, the abutter to the north is number 12. So I'm assuming that that is, Zipta Farm one would be the first number there, because there isn't anything be, before it, correct?
I think their address is on College Highway.
Yeah.
Well, there's also a property between the Zipta Farm and the College Highway property, it's Shirley Zipta's field and garden, so that doesn't have a number, but that is on, um, Glendale Road. So our, the town property is between Shirley Zipta's veggie garden formerly and Pete's house.
Hmm, because she's got, um, number 12 to the north, and then vacant land to the south.
Right, the vacant land is Shirley Zipta's garden. And then after that are some barns that are the backyard of a house that's on College Highway.
Thank you, Marla, for correcting us.
What's your guess on that, Marla, like, number 10 for the, for the conservation area, or eight?
Well, since it's right next to Pete's, and we don't know what will happen to the Zipta property, you know, there could be maybe one or two lots put in there, and if they ever decided to do something with the barns and make them not part of the College Highway stuff, but make them part of Glendale, so I would think if Pete is 12, make it 10, because it's right next door, there is nothing else.
Yeah, I live across the street from Pete, I, I'd agree with, just make it 10, because there's no room in between, as Marla said.
And the reason we're doing this is because so many people use Google Maps and plug-in, where do you want to go, and it's just easier if there's a number. Some of the properties have addresses, like 111 Glendale Road, our Clearwater Conservation Area. It turns out, the Manhand Meadow Sanctuary is 48 East Street. Some properties have it and some don't, but for directions and mapping, it's just easier if we have a number, I think.
Okay, the number, the, the next one, then you're requesting, let's see, Assessor's Map 35 lot 39, College Highway, adjacent to Lyman Family Conservation Area. There's vacant land to the north and to the south, it's number 362 College Highway. Any suggestions on that, Marla?
I don't know how far apart to do it. This property, long ago, or not that long ago, in the 80s, had a house on it, I don't know what happened to it, but it seems to be gone now, and there's like a driveway. It's a 2.05 acre property, immediately next to 362, which has a house. But again, when we're trying to direct people to it, it'd be easier if there's a number instead of, look for 362, and it's just before that, if you're heading south.
Which one are you talking about now? I'm sorry, are you talking about the Lyman property?
Lyman, yeah.
I'm talking about the property that's between Lyman and 362.
Okay, I'm trying to look on the Assessor's Map to see where these are.
Do you mind if I share my screen? It may help, because I muti-mapper up, so I can-
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Let me know if you guys can see my screen or not.
Yep.
That's great.
Okay.
Okay, so scroll up then, Dan.
Go north a teeny bit, there you go.
Is it this, this one, oh, Lyman, there it is.
It's not, it's the one south of Lyman.
That little, this guy?
But does Lyman have a number, Marla?
No.
Is, is this the one you asked me about a couple weeks ago, this, this little triangular one?
That trapezoidally thing, yes.
Yeah, well, sorry, trapezoid.
That's the one we're trying to figure out a little more detail about it, but it is owned by the town of Southampton, it was given to the town in 1988. It has the remnants of the old driveway, whereas the frontage of the Lyman Family Conservation Area is a ravine or a ditch or a stream or something, you cannot drive into that. So what, what we would be doing is possibly putting a parking area into that unnumbered area right north of 362, so we would want to tell people, that's where it is. And if it turns out, we can find some more research in the Assessor's Office, then we would make basically that little spot green, so that the whole thing becomes called Lyman Family Conservation Area.
Okay.
Right now, it's not, and that's where I'm looking for a number.
Well, for all intents, how about 358, does that sound reasonable?
Sure, sure.
And then if that other little, uh, triangle piece, something, they want to do something else with it, it'll still give number 360 to put on that, so 358 for Lyman?
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking for the number for the not green part. If you want to assign two numbers, go ahead, but I don't think there's a need, because, well, they are two distinctive parcels, even though they're both owned by the town.
Well, why don't we just make it 360?
Well, I'm confused, because you, if Lyman doesn't have an address, why aren't you, why don't you want to assign one to that?
I don't care if you do, but the driveway that we want to point people to is in the other part.
All right, so 360 then.
That's fine.
Everybody agree, 360?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Dan, the next one is Assessor's Map 25 lot 69.
Can I have an address typed in here?
Uh, it just says Pleasant Street, Brown Conservation Area, 72, uh, look for 72 Pleasant. It's between 72 and 66.
Across the street from 69. In that case, it is the green one.
So 66 is here and 72, right, so in between the two.
So 70?
Doer? Actually, well, yeah. You good with that, 70 Pleasant?
Fine with me.
Sure.
And that is the Brown Conservation Area.
Yes. Is the official name Alice Brown Conservation Area, Marla?
That is true.
Okay. That's all I have from Martha, is that all you got there, Marla?
For now, yes. Thank you.
Till you dig up some more, huh? Sarah, this, Sarah, where's Sarah, is she still there? Yeah, there she is.
Come here.
This is, uh, this is, uh, some of our more mundane work we do on occasion.
Makes sense.
It's gotta be done.
All right, thank you, Marla.
Thanks, Marla.
Thank you.
So going along with, uh, address changes, Dan, you had an email, you wanted to be on the agenda, because you had some questions regarding the assignment of, uh, address changes, the criteria, et cetera, would you?
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, it's just, I, I have heard from people, other offices in town, that when addresses do change, there's a ripple effect that, that goes through other, other parts of town, so I think the, the idea and the way we can reduce the, um, the burden on, on other, other parts of, or of the municipality is, is to sign, assign a number early and, uh, not change the number, and if they have to change the number, one, one thought someone brought up, well, if they have to change the numbers, their way to, to, um, have them absorb the cost versus the town having to pay, that's maybe more complicated to implement. Um, it's just, it's just a matter of, when an address changes, it, it, it causes paperwork and it causes, oh, extra effort, so.
Are you suggesting what, that we, how did, what's the best thing?
I think the simplest solution is just get a number assigned early in the project and don't change it. And if they have to change it, then make sure they have a, have a good reason, um, and make sure that we, as the planning board, um, notify the other parties involved, like the Conservation Commission and, uh, the, the assessors and everybody else involved, that the address has, has changed.
I spoke to Martha Lemey, and she doesn't happen to see a problem with the process so far, you know, people change, most of the time when someone changes, it's on a corner lot or something like that, uh, or they're subdividing and there's been a, a lot for, from 100 years ago that was numbered wrong, but that doesn't happen too often. But she said that if it got two owners for her to have to do a lot of paperwork, which she doesn't think it really is, she, she could, uh, initiate a fee herself, because I don't want this board to have to initiate any fees for changing addresses, um, but-
That makes sense.
Um, I don't, I don't see a great problem with it, uh, yet, um, I don't know what everybody else feels, but.
Um, Paul, may I say something? This is Marla.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the Conservation Commission has noticed in the last few years, more numbers changing than they had in the past, several of them were corner lots, as, you know, you had mentioned, signing off on 391 College Highway. Several of them were corner lots, as you know, you had mentioned, signing off on three ninety-one College Highway. And when we went there, they said, oh no, now it's ninety-eight Valley Road. Well, we had already filed with, they had filed with DEP with the College Highway Address. Uh, we had filled out all of our paperwork. And it's not like, well, why don't you just refile it? You can't. It's with DEP. It's on their website. It's now been recorded at the Registry of Deeds. It's on our paper files in a filing cabinet in alphabetical order by street name. And so now, if going forward, it's ninety-eight Valley Road, well, it's in the V drawer, not the C drawer. So twenty years from now, when someone goes to look for it, they won't find it. And even if it's like, well, it's just the computer files. Well, then you have to go and rename all the computer files to do it because we don't have a sophisticated database structure that you can get in with multiple keys. It just makes it more complicated that if, before they start, they pick the address. Now, obviously, if it's the corner lot, it's they changed their mind where they want the driveway coming in. But in other cases, it's been the subdivided lots and it just makes it cumbersome. And I know I have been looking up projects from over twenty years ago, so I know about looking in the older files. So I guess the idea is if we can upfront get the numbers assigned, that would be good because multiple cases, we've seen a lot of it, they have the big lots and they're splitting them up into smaller ones. Well, as soon as you do the A and R, then, you know, please assign the street number and that will make it a lot easier so they don't change it halfway through and then the paperwork is in two different states. That's one of the reasons. But as far as a, a cost, there's none to us, so.
No, I can imagine it's a, it's a paperwork nightmare. The only thing I would say, Marla, is it, it appears to me they filed all their conservation work before they went and got the address changed.
Yep.
Correct?
That is true.
Well, we had no idea that and, uh, I know they changed it after the fact for you. I would expect that from your committee, you would probably have that on the top of your list to make sure, say, is this the address? And, and does this conform with the A and R? Um, show me the A and R first with the, with the address. Cause otherwise our board wouldn't know you ran into this problem, but if, if you could head off them because if they're doing the conservation work before they get the address, uh, which probably is out of the ordinary. I don't think it happens a lot, so.
Oh, it does. It does. In some cases, I guess, particularly if it's a lot that's smack in between two, it's like, okay, I know what number you're going to assign it because there is nothing left. You know, it has to be that, so we'll do it that way. But it's very frequent. It's more often than not, and.
It sounds to me you've got to have, you've got to have that A and R in hand before you, before they, uh, submit an application. So, uh, get, get that work done beforehand, uh, on your request list.
Yeah, it's usually, you know, we can't force stuff, but if you're in the position where if they come to you and say, yeah, we do need the address, then you'll do it, that hopefully by the time we're done with our hearings and meetings, we can use the right address. But, yeah, it's becoming, well, it just has to do with the way things are developed. And it had come to our attention also, certainly some subdevelopments have a lot of water through them, some have none. But when they put in a subdevelopment and create the street, you know, they have lot numbers. But usually at the beginning, the lot numbers don't correspond with a street number. So if you could, if you're approving the subdivision layout with the lots, then maybe at that same time, assign those street numbers. That would be helpful.
We'll see what we can do to help you out on that.
Thank you.
Cindy, you had some committee reports you wanted to, uh, speak on.
Yep. So first of all, if you all recall, um, I brought up quite a while back the fact that a gentleman who actually lives in East Hampton on Palmroye Street owns a thirty-something acre lot, which is landlocked from Southampton side. Um, and it's over on the Cook Road area. Um, his, his name is Donald Psychowski and he did send a letter to our town, so it's just public record, saying something like, do you want to buy my land? The, um, that letter ended up with the Open Space Committee. Well, long story short, um, I asked for an opinion and Paul, you forwarded it over to, um, Larry Smith, who reviewed our subdivision bylaw, bylaws and sent, uh, sent me an opinion which, in an email of September of last year, basically saying that, um, our subdivision bylaws would say that a road would have to be accessible from a town road for purposes of emergency vehicles, postal coverage, you know, highway department, et cetera. Um, unless this, um, unless the planning board were for some reason going to issue a waiver, which would be, why would you issue a waiver if you have these rules? That was essentially Larry's opinion. All right, fast forward to this week, there was a meeting of some people from East Hampton, including their plan, their professional planner, Jeff Bag, I think his name is, um, some people from their, um, land trust, Mark Wamsley from Kestrel Land Trust, et cetera, and, um, oh, and also from, um, Massachusetts Department of Fish and Wildlife, because that, they own property right next to this land. Here's what we've discovered. There is a man, or, uh, I should say, uh, an LLC. It's called Mountain View. They own land on Palmroye Street and, um, it is, it is potentially accessible to go in from Palmroye Street on East Hampton and come all the way around to connect with that land on, um, that is owned by the Psychowskis. Same problem still exists. There's no Southampton Road that would access the Southampton parcel. What I think we're going to need is an official letter. Well, I'm bringing this up for two reasons. I'm bringing it up just for information purposes, just to let you know that this is an sort of an open issue. I attended that meeting, um, and just, just basically to hear all about what's going on with this. We don't know what the Psychowskis' plan is per se. An offer was made to them by Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife, but it was not what they were looking for. It was considerably less than they say they want or said they want. But the second thing is, and I brought this up before, we, we are going to need a, I think, an official opinion by the planning board so that East Hampton knows what we think, uh, whether we would ever see the potential for a, a waiver to allow them to build, um, a subdivision that's not accessible by any Southampton roads. So that's what I'm bringing up for. Um, should, how should we do this?
I would expect that some of the, the parties would, would, uh, ask an opinion, um, of this board and quite frankly, I would probably ask Copelman and Page to review it, to get a definitive. I know Larry's, I appreciate what Larry said and, um, don't doubt his opinion, but I would also get a legal opinion to put it to rest.
Okay, well, I think I'm the, I'm the representative asking for it. You, you want somebody like Jeff Bag or something?
I'd need something in writing about the principles, who, who they are, where it's located and what they're looking for. And then proceed from there.
So, well, you mean like the owners of the property? That's what you mean by the principles?
Yeah. Are they the ones that are entertaining offers to wanting to do something with it?
I don't know how official the entertainment is. I, I think they've, they're not sure. You know, they're sort of dangling that potentiality right in front of us. They haven't.
I would expect that if they want to dispose of the land somehow, either selling it or donating it, that it's got a, to me, it's got to derive from them the, uh, and initiate a letter in their intent.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Is that, everybody else agree with that? That's good. All right. Next is you've asked me to, um, represent, I'm going to do share screen right now. You asked me to represent, uh, the planning board on the, oops, what happened to it? Oh, I see it. Okay.
Something's up on the screen.
All right, so, um, uh, the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee, um, which I attended one meeting and I'm just going to show you what they're working on here. Let me see if I can get this to work.
This is the grant committee you said, Cindy?
Yep. This is the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee for the town, for our town. And they're working on this thing. It's come from the state. It's called the Community One Stop for Growth Application Template. And just in summary, this is an opportunity for a community to submit one or up to five different proposals for, um, what they potentially would like to see state money support. And so they're, they're kind of trying to figure out what, what to apply for. A couple of, all right, so this is quite a lengthy document. I'm not even going to, um, go any further on that. But I want to share a different document. I just wanted you to know this is what they're working on. They asked for specific questions that the planning board could answer and I couldn't answer it off the top of my head. Do we currently have commercial zoning by right in our zoning bylaws? Or are, does anybody know the answer to that?
Commercial by right?
See it right here on the top of the screen? Are you seeing? It's called, this came right out of that document that I showed you. I just gleaned from that, the, the ones where I have to get answers to these questions. Do we currently have commercial zoning by right? Is that what we have?
I believe so.
Okay. We have zoning that allows mixed-use development near transit and activities.
No.
We have zoning that allows multifamily development near transit and activity.
No.
We have zoning that allows duplexes in most residential districts.
No.
Do we have zoning that allows accessory dwelling units in most residential districts?
Accessories. Yeah, most of them, yeah.
Do we have zoning that requires no more than one parking space per unit for a multifamily unit?
No more than one parking space per?
Per unit for a multifamily unit. You know, like the department buildings? Is that say only one parking space per unit?
No, I think they allow more than that, but.
So no. We, do you happen to know if we have donated municipal land for housing? And if you don't know the answer to that, we can get that from.
Donated land?
Yep.
I know, I know of none, unless the housing authority, isn't that there?
Yeah, all right, we'll ask them. Okay. So the second part of this is, um, whether or not the planning board wants to apply, not, we won't do the work. I mean, the, the Ad-Hoc Grant Committee will do the work. But do we, given that we have so many responsibilities noted in the master plan implementation process, also on the open space and recreation plan, remember how we were reviewing all the things that lists planning board? I'm just wondering if there's any particular project that, um, you think planning board might like to get some support around? Um, and one of the thoughts I had was the mixed-use, um, planning that we might get support around. If you recall, that was in the master plan process. Does anybody have any ideas of things that we could put in and ask for support? We're not going to automatically get it. This is just like pie in the sky wishes.
A question. Could we ask for money for a town planner? Is like a salary employee?
This is a short-term grant.
Okay, I don't, I don't understand if, what it exactly entails, so.
Like a project that would have a beginning.
A project. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
It sounds good, but I, I don't think that would work. That would be nice, huh?
Yeah. You said pie in the sky, so.
Yeah. Does anybody have any ideas on that? We don't have to answer this now, but if anyone does, that I could just put forth to the grant committee, any of the things we have responsibilities for. Okay. I'll tell them we're still thinking about it. And the other couple of things I want to say is that, um, the update of the master plan, uh, project, Ken Comia is working on that, but here we are into a brand-new calendar year, twenty twenty-one, and he got a whole bunch of new projects. So he's still finalizing that report. I'm just reporting on that. I also represent the planning board on CPC, so, um, I don't really have anything special to report on that. Except that it looks like, um, the funding, um, to, uh, partial funding for the, um, Manhan Meadow Sanctuary, um, projects is been approved for, um, CPC, by CPC to go on town meeting warrant. Um, I think it was, they came up with fifty thousand dollars. So when you go to town meeting, that would be great if you could support that. That'll be CPA money. And the last thing is to share with you that the Neighborhood Outreach Grant that the Open Space Committee was awarded earlier this year is really taking off. We're going to do a series of programs, one set of programs, and you're going to get a mailer. Everybody in town's going to get a mailer that looks like this. It's really kind of cool. A professional graphic artist in our town who has volunteered her time and also negotiated a phenomenal print price and it's a postcard. It looks hard in this copy because this is a mock-up, but, um, all's going to fall well within our, our budget for this, but this is going to be some, um, education regarding conservation in our town, including two guided walks, uh, guided hikes, if you will, on our conservation lands, including, uh, Wolf Hill Sanctuary and Clearwater Woodland. And the second part is experts, experts on certain aspects of conservation and specific invitation letters are going to go to some of our large parcel landowners, specifically in the area of Palmer Mountain, Little Mountain, and, um, uh, what was, oh, in the, um, uh, the watershed above the Tycomoni Reservoir. And those experts are going to speak on appraisal, doing appraisal of conservation properties as well as applying for a CR and APR and also the tax benefits of, of, um, conservation. So all of that is coming together. Now, that is going to be for landowners of greater than ten acres and in those sort of specific areas. So you'll get this mailer in the mail if you're, uh, live in the town. But the other one, um, unless you're, you fall into that category of a large parcel landowner, you won't specifically get it. I will be looking for press around that and we'll see if we can get some good attention to our town for, for doing these things. And some of the other aspects. So I'm really just reporting on this. Any questions?
Nope. Not for me.
Okay.
Well, thank you for everything you do, Cindy.
You're a busy lady with all those committees she's on.
Glad good, good engineers are interested in the planning board. That's what I'm saying. You can come back, Keith, you know?
No extra seats, Cindy, you know, if there was a.
Working on it, working on it.
I know a few, a few other engineers in town.
We actually spoke to one and there's another one that might be interested in the future and I hope so, so. But in the meantime, we've, I hope we haven't scared you off, Sarah. It's a very happy group.
No, not at all. Cindy, could you take down that sharing?
Oh, sorry. Yep.
Thank you. I just want to back up a minute. I'm looking at the calendar. There's an extra Wednesday here in March, so I'm going to schedule that public hearing for the zone change on April seventh instead. Also because that week of the, um, twenty-first is school vacation week and I don't want to uh, interrupt any board members' plans if you want to get away with the family. So I'm going to change to April seventh.
Where are we going to go?
There's, there's stuff opening up. That's it. I don't have any warrants. I don't have any communications. I think I've covered it all. So Sarah, comments from you. Isn't this fun? I think I've covered it all. So Sarah, comments from you. Isn't this fun?
It's interesting. Like I told Keith and Cindy, I think there's a lot to learn just in terms of how everything runs and, you know, the town, how everything functions and rules and all that. But I'm definitely interested in learning and I appreciate you guys letting me listen in.
Good. And if you ever want to stop into the town clerk's office, she'll provide you with a copy of the zoning bylaws if you want to study. Although they are online too, so on our website or a link on the website.
Okay, yeah, yeah, take a look.
Well, anyway, thank you for listening in. Thank you all. Anybody else have any business they need to conduct or any comments?
I have a question for Cindy and Sarah. It's about Sarah's nomination papers. I stopped by Cindy's driveway on Thursday and I couldn't, I don't know if you had pulled the papers in yet, Cindy, so I'm still looking to get, both Juliette and I want to, want to get Sarah, on Sarah's nomination papers. So do you have them right now, Sarah, at your house?
I have them, yeah. So we can connect or I can.
I'll connect then, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I pulled them in, Keith. Sorry.
Do you know I was coming by, so you pulled them in? Is that what you said?
If it was daylight, I'm surprised unless it was close to sunset, but, okay.
Yeah, it was around 4:30 on Thursday.
Very good. All right, folks, have a good next couple of weeks.
I guess officially I'll motion to adjourn, Paul.
I'll second.
Motion's been made to second it all in favor. Bye.
Bye.
Have a good week.
Keith, Keith, I know there's opening on the Norris School Committee and the Hampshire Regional.
God.
I just want you to know that, I know you've got kids at school, so.
I think I'm going to, I'm going to focus on my career as a youth soccer coach for a little bit.
Okay.
But I would, you know what, you know what was a lot of fun for me? And maybe I can rope Sarah into this because it is more like construction, is finding ways to spend CPA's money, because I hear it's quite a bucket. I did the, the playground project at Norris years ago, and that was a lot of fun.
Oh, very cool.
Yeah.
The parks, the park is.
You get 60 grand and then you get to go spend it and build it, and it was great. So I would definitely do that again.
Hey, just so you know, the Parks Commission is looking to re, because I'm on the Parks Commission. We're redoing the, the playground at Conant Park, the one that's kind of, is really older.
Oh, yeah.
The metal, so, so you just mentioned a park that's being redone in town. Well, there you go.
Yeah, I know, I know enough about playgrounds to be dangerous, so I might be your guy, Dan.
You're the playground guy. Got it.
Very good.
Thank you, folks. Good night. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.